Roll calls, Andy.
Councilmember Stacy Green.
Present.
Councilmember Kim Green.
Here.
Councilmember Sue Tavallaro.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Palfini.
Here. I make a motion to excuse Bob Hall for emergency reasons.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The first item on the ceremonial agenda is a CTC Technology and Energy Broadband Presentation. This is a culmination of at least a year's worth of work, maybe longer, on broadband and trying to bring it to the South County for Dunsmere, Weed, and Mount Shasta. Are you ready? Oh, it's gonna be there.
It's up here.
Oh.
We've got it on ours, too.
Thank you.
Excuse me?
Yep.
Nah, yeah, echo. And the audience can't hear.
Okay, great.
Are we good?
So, as I said, my name is Sabrina Gosnell, and I am a senior analyst with CTC Technology and Energy, and one of the members of the CTC team that worked with the cities of Dunsmere, Mount Shasta, and Weed on this engagement. Also on the line are my colleagues Michael O'Halloran, a staff analyst, and Tom Ass, a principal analyst. And we make up a business team who manage this project. So this presentation is meant to summarize what CTC provided in our final report. It's a pendency, but there are private tendencies, and an additional Q and A document that we provided in May of this year to respond to some questions that were posed by representatives from the cities. So like I said, I'll jump into this summary, and after I'm finished, we'll have time for questions and answers. And any of the three of us on the phone here will be our best to answer any questions that may come up. So our analysis starts primarily to identify gaps in available service for residential and business users throughout the cities, and to help the cities provide, I'm sorry, develop strategies for addressing those gaps. So this report offered a range of analysis related to the financial and business implications of different approaches to enabling and especially potentially deploying broadband infrastructure. Overall, we wanted to help identify what actions the cities might be able to take to enable, encourage, and potentially develop infrastructure to support enhanced broadband access in the cities of Dunsmere, Mount Shasta, and Weed. So, and we did that in the context of pragmatic business and financial projections while also considering the stated needs of users in the area and the perception of leadership from the cities. So coming into this project, there was an assertion from both of the cities that services in the area lag behind the rest of the country, and that there was widespread frustration in the community with the existing services that were available at the time. To achieve these goals and as a foundational step in developing our report, CTC met with a range of stakeholders and representatives from the cities. So Michael O'Halloran, who is also on the phone, joined me to travel to the area last year, early 2017, and we met with several groups, including local business representation, city stakeholders, so staff and leadership from the cities, as well as members of the local provider community. At the same time that Michael and I were on site, there was an engineer from our outside plant team onsite, and he was evaluating the physical attributes of the cities that would impact broadband deployment, so both wireless and wireline. So he looked at things like poles and tree coverage and other characteristics of the physical terrain and existing local infrastructure to inform CTC's analysis on what kinds of practical and financial implications and considerations might exist for infrastructure deployment. Following that meeting and that site, following those meetings, rather, and that site survey, we delved further into evaluating the local broadband market as it existed at that time. We created a conceptual design and cost estimate for a fiber network that would pass every home and business in the cities. So this universal or ubiquitous deployment was an articulated goal of city leadership when the project began. We developed potential business models for necessary fees, costs, funding, and financing for the network to cash flow, and we created a draft request for information for potential partnership with the private sector. So all those efforts underpin this analysis and the resulting report and its attachments, as well as that follow-up Q and A that we provided in May just a few weeks ago. So also throughout the course of this project, we made efforts to maintain a dialogue with representatives from the cities, answering questions as they arose, including the preparation of a detailed Q and A document last fall, following a series of meetings and written questions posed by the cities. So that Q and A document is attached to the report as Appendix B. So there are actually two separate Q and A documents, the one from last fall and then the one from just a few weeks ago in May. And so that's a summary of the methodology that we used in preparing the final report and the written deliverables for the cities. What we learned at the time about the existing broadband market is that the options were somewhat limited compared to available broadband service nationwide, although both Cal-OR and Northland were working at the time to improve both their existing infrastructure and their service offerings. It's also really important to note here that in the analysis that we conduct, not all service offerings are available in all areas. So there may be outliers where nothing greater than DSL service is available, for example. We noted that available speeds in Dunsmere and Weed were lower than what could be purchased in Mount Shasta at the time, and many of the stakeholders that we met were complained of inconsistent service, inadequate speeds, issues with dependability, that sort of thing. And so this was for both, like I mentioned, we met with the business community, and so that was a business perspective as well as a residential perspective, and the perspective of representatives from the cities based on input from the community. At the time we prepared this report, the maximum available speed in the area was 24 megabits per second download, though we were advised at that time that those speeds would be significantly increased by the end of 2017 specifically for Northland. Today, both Northland and Cal-OR offer speeds up to 100 megabits per second down and 10 megabits per second upload. So this is a key takeaway from this analysis and from what is followed. So the FCT definition of service level that constitutes broadband is 25 megabits download and 3 megabits upload speed, 3 megabits per second. So at the time that the study started, the service that was widely available didn't actually technically qualify as broadband service. But today, the available service is four times the download speed that the FCC considers broadband. So this is important. I mentioned, you know, speeds nationwide and comparable to other areas throughout the U.S., the cities of Mount Shasta, Dunsmere, and Weed are actually very well-served at this point. This is especially true compared to other similarly sized cities. So for communities this size as does Mount Shasta, Dunsmere, and Weed, 100 megabits per second download speeds with 10 megabits per second upload speeds are very fast. So our report outlines four overarching potential approaches to increasing access to competitive broadband services in the cities. The first approach involves encouraging the local provider community to upgrade existing infrastructure. So as I noted, both Cal-OR and Northland have begun that process. The other three options are what I'll call construction models, and that means that they'll require some sort of infrastructure investment from the cities. And the most important to know, the most important thing to know about these models is that all the construction would require, all these construction models would require at least $10 million in startup funding. So that means $10 million of grant money or cash on hand or some other source of funding that would not have to be paid back or otherwise recovered by the cities would need to be expended on each of the three construction models. So the second potential approach, the first of the construction models, is if the cities were to construct a publicly owned network where the cities or potentially maybe one lead city acting on behalf of all of the cities would act as the retail service provider or RSP. And we use RSP instead of ISP for Internet service providers because we want to encompass not only Internet service providers but also providers of other retail services that might be delivered over a fiber network, so things like voice and video, data, security monitoring, and so on. The next model is if the cities were to pursue what we called a competitive access model, and that would entail the cities constructing a fiber network and leasing that infrastructure to an outside entity that would act as the RSP. And the final model is pursuing a community access model, which would entail the cities constructing a fiber network to enable multiple RSPs to sell services. So that approach includes the AMN model, or the AMN Idaho model, which was raised by city representation as a potential model that the cities might want to consider. So I'll talk a little bit more about what each of these models might entail for the cities, given that they all carry different degrees of potential risk. So the first model, the first, I shouldn't say model, the first approach that I mentioned involves relying on the private sector to address service availability issues in the community. And obviously, this carries the least amount of risk for the cities, especially given that some local providers are already taking steps to enhance available services through things like network upgrades and enhancements. This might be a very attractive option to achieve the city's broadband goals. So that's one end of the spectrum where the cities wouldn't need to make a significant investment or take great risk. On the other end of the spectrum is the possibility that the cities working together would construct a publicly owned network and become the retail service provider, meaning that the cities would directly serve the end user. So this carries the greatest degree of risk of all of the approaches because it involves the cities entering the broadband market as a provider and competing with the private sector. So this has been somewhat successful for certain entities in the U.S. I'm sure that everyone has heard of some success stories. But there are very specific parameters that have enabled that success. So for example, if a public entity enters the market where there's no top-level competitor, so where maybe community members can't gain access to services that the public provider might be able to offer, obviously that gives the public entity a competitive edge. There also are some situations where perhaps significant grant funding was available that didn't require the public entity to recover its capital costs, and so all that it had to pay for was its operating costs. But generally speaking, it's very difficult for a public entity to compete with the private sector in this space. Often, the private sector has things like economies of scale that can't be matched by a public entity, in that the private sector can spread their costs out over multiple markets. But obviously, that's not the case for a public entity that's serving only its own community. And for the cities, given the cost of construction and the necessary take rates to make the enterprise cash flow, the cities would not be able to offer competitive prices to consumers. In fact, as we were analyzing, as we were analyzing cost estimates and conducting financial analysis, we were actually unable to produce a cost model in which the cities could achieve positive cash flow while acting directly as the retail service provider. So it would come with significant risk. So there are, another approach is the competitive access model. And there are actually two variations of what we are calling a competitive access model, where the cities would develop a fiber network and lease that infrastructure to an outside entity that would act as the retail service provider. One of those is based on a partnership between the city of Westminster, Maryland, and its partner team internet, and the other is based on the Huntsville Utilities partnership with Google Fiber. So in each of these, the public entity made a significant investment in infrastructure that was leased in some capacity to the private sector. Also, in each of these, the public partner constructs, owns, and maintains a fiber network that passes every home and business while a private partner places electronics to light the network. So each of these variations of the competitive access model, the private partner directly serves the end user while the public sector owns the, owns the infrastructure. Both models would require an FTT deployment in which the cities would be on the hook for that infrastructure that would be leased to the private partner. And these models are very similar. Where they differ is in their treatment with the fiber drop cable, which is the cable that connects a resident or business to the distribution network. So in Westminster, the city opted to retain ownership and bear the cost of the entire network, so everything, including their drop cable all the way to the customer's premises. In Huntsville, Google Fiber is actually responsible for the drop. So when a new customer signs up for service in Westminster, the city is responsible for that drop cable. And in Huntsville, when a new customer decides to come online, Google Fiber pays for that drop cable and also owns it. So a slightly different variation of the community access model, which is different than the competitive access model, can be found in AMN Idaho, which, like I mentioned, is a community that the cities raised as a possible community that you might like to emulate. So the AMN model, it's important to note some of the various, some of the nuances of the AMN model. So first of all, the AMN model doesn't provide ubiquitous coverage, and that was a goal that was articulated to us by city leadership from all of the cities early on, that there was a goal to provide service to everyone in the community. AMN doesn't provide that ubiquitous coverage. Instead, it relies on what's called a demand aggregation model, where infrastructure is deployed once a certain take rate has been achieved. So this is similar to the Google Fiber head's approach in Kansas City. In AMN, the reported necessary take rates are in about the 67% to 70% range, which is very high. As a comparison, generally, our analyses use about 35% take rate. Also in AMN, every subscriber pays a $3,000 infrastructure fee either upfront or financed over 20 years. So folks who want that service have to pay $3,000 to get it, just for the infrastructure. Also, each subscriber pays, the city of AMN, a monthly infrastructure fee if financed, and a monthly operations and maintenance fee. So as in the case with our community access model, each subscriber chooses a ISP and pays it according to the services to which they subscribe. So based on our analysis, the outside plant construction costs will total about $15 million. So that's just over $3,000 per residence or business. In addition to that, we're looking at about a $661 drop cost per customer, and that's the drop cable that connects, that connects the customer's home or business, as I mentioned. It's really important to note that the, no partnership model or approach will change the economics of deployment. And so if the cities were to seek a partnership, the fees that would be required of a private partner or a network operator to sustain operation of the network would be three to five times greater than those that have been paid in existing broadband public-private partnerships in the U.S. It's also important to note that these partnerships are not necessarily partnerships that have been replicated or that will be replicated. So those partnerships, the Huntsville model and the Westminster model that I mentioned, neither partner is likely to pay those fees as high again as what they have paid previously. So all of that said, it's also important to note that fiber carries certain benefits that are unmatched by other technologies. Fiber is the preferred option for new construction, so in cases where an existing network is not being upgraded. It is also currently the most future-proof scalable long-term broadband infrastructure option, and we don't anticipate that changing anytime soon. At the same time, we do expect that demand will increase at both the residential and business level as applications and electronics become increasingly sophisticated. It's also important to note that 5G and other wireless technologies are not possible without fiber. So those technologies rely on fiber. There are alternatives to a fully fibered deployment for us. And we looked at three key alternative approaches, including, as I mentioned, encouraging incumbent providers to augment their existing infrastructure and service offerings. We looked at also the cities potentially deploying a fixed wireless network, and we evaluated the cities potentially deploying only a fiber backbone network that would connect the cities to one another as well as connect to certain key sites like schools and public facilities. So encouraging the local provider community is potentially, like I mentioned, a low-risk option for the cities. This might be desirable, given that it seems that the incumbent provider community in the city is willing and able to upgrade infrastructure and potentially deploy new infrastructure. So that is a potential option as an alternative to fiber to the premises. Another option is potentially developing a backbone fiber network between the three cities to connect them together and to support connectivity to key city sites, as well as certain other facilities that the cities decide are important. So one key element of this is that the cities can also encourage existing local providers or even new market, new market entrants to use this network. And it would be a public demonstration of the city's commitment to addressing some of the broadband challenges in the community. Based on our analysis, such deployment costs the city's about $3.252 million. And then the other alternative that we looked at was the cities potentially pursuing a fixed wires, fixed wireless deployment, excuse me. So a fixed wireless deployment has inherent limitations when it comes to things like coverage and capacity. And when your goal is ubiquitous service or universal service to every home and business in the community, those limitations are made even more complex. So that's really important to keep in mind. Also, as I mentioned, wireless does require wireline infrastructure to support it. And so although wireless would have a lower initial capital outlay, the long-term cost of a wireless deployment in the cities would actually be higher. So our primary recommendation to the cities is to determine your desired path forward. And that means work together to decide what your goals and objectives are as localities. So as I mentioned, given the incumbent provider response, it seems that it would be prudent for the cities to engage that local provider community in further discussions about what the cities might be able to do to encourage and enable additional infrastructure deployment, as well as supplement the efforts that are being made by the private sector. So it may be such that the cities opt to invest in areas where the private sector simply isn't going to go or can't go, where they can't make that business case, where they won't get a return on investment, so perhaps traditionally low-income areas or that sort of thing. We encourage the cities to determine what sort of parameters might make sense in a public-private partnership. As I mentioned, a partnership model won't change the economics of how expensive it's going to be to deploy infrastructure. But perhaps the term partnership could be expanded to encompass some sort of relationship with the, with the existing local providers. But I think in terms of any sort of partnership, the most important thing you can do as cities is figure out what exactly you want to achieve from that type of relationship. So is ubiquity still a goal? Do you still want to have universal service throughout the cities, that sort of thing? And then, if not Vane, one of our primary recommendations to the city is to establish some sort of intergovernmental agreement or a consortium of some sort, or somehow jointly work together in a legally sanctioned way. So you, as representatives of your city, will have to determine, with representatives from the other two cities, what that looks like, and what kinds of laws, regulations, ordinances you might be subject to. And obviously, this is where you would much rely heavily on your legal counsel to help you figure that out. But the key here is that if you do move forward, or no matter how you move forward, it will be really important to move forward together as a joint effort, as opposed to one of the three cities trying to undertake some, some sort of endeavor on, on their own. So some sort of joint government structure to help determine who has what responsibilities will be really crucial for you as you, as you start to think about how to move forward into the future. So that is a very long-winded, high-level summary of the reports and appendices that we prepared.
Well, anybody with questions besides me? I'm hoping there's some out there. This is Ken Palfini, the mayor, also part of the CTC group. Did you happen to study the current, anything regarding the current political climate in California regarding emerging markets for broadband and equal access? Anybody there? I hope they heard me. That was less a lot to repeat, because I don't remember now.
So I'm so sorry that I didn't catch that question.
Shoot, okay. This is Ken Palfini. I was part of the committee that was studying the broadband. Did you happen to study or look into any of the current political climate regarding equal access with the state of California?
So regarding equal access in the state of California, is that what you said?
Correct. In other words, the California Emerging Technology Fund is trying to generate some interest in making broadband available throughout the state, and high speed, not low speed. Did you look at, at that parameter?
So what we did in the course of this project was we looked at what was available at the state level and the federal level during the time when we were actually doing the analysis itself. And at the time that we were conducting the analysis, there was nothing that was available for the cities themselves based on the availability of speeds of 24 megabits down.
The city of Weed has some very high-density, low-income blocks. Do you know anything about grant funding to areas like this?
I'm so sorry. Can you repeat the first half of the question?
The city of, the city of Weed has some very high-density, low-income blocks. That, I was hoping if you studied any kind of grant funding, that we could initiate some of the broadband by using that as a leverage point.
Yeah, Michael?
Yes.
The question was, that's about grants for high-density, low-income areas in the community.
Okay, so the, the funding that is available is actually not based on low income. So at the time of the analysis, the funding that was available was based on the available speeds. Unfortunately, the way that the grant funds are structured is that if there is even one household within a block that has adequate access or with household within a block that has adequate access, or what FCC defines as adequate access, those funds are not available in the entirety of the block.
I know when we did some studies, we identified some price points with commercial and industrial and institutional. We didn't study the average citizen's, um, I guess, appetite for high speed and how much they'd be willing to pay. Do you know what the current cost of the high speed in the local area is?
I'm sorry, Martin, is it possible for you to repeat Ken's question?
No, I can go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll speak directly into the microphone a little bit better. Uh, when we initiated the study, we identified the price points that were, that our customers were paying for commercial, industrial, and institutions. We didn't study the average cities, citizens' appetite for an increased cost or need. Can you tell me the current cost of high speed provided in our local area?
Yes, so we have, if you will hold on one moment, we have a comprehensive competitive assessment of the speeds available in the community at the time of the report.
Okay.
Now, the Calor and Northland speeds, where we're talking up to 100 megabits per second, that are more recently available in the area, I'm looking at the speeds right now. So it looks like for Northland, for the 100 megabits per second down and 10 megabits per second up, in the first year, it would be $74.08. In the second year, it would be $84.08, and in the third year, the full rate of $99.05.
Okay. Is that in any of the appendixes?
Um, it is in the question and answer documents.
Okay.
The second one that was submitted to the cities in May of 2018. The comprehensive assess, I'm sorry, the competitive assessment that I spoke about that's in the report are the actual broadband speeds that were available at the beginning of this effort, so that's around February and March of 2017. And those are the publicly reported prices for various speeds, including residential and business.
Are those on fiber optics or are those on, uh, copper?
They're multiple technologies. So we have over cable, fiber, uh, fixed wireless, DSL, and then satellite.
Currently Cal North and Northland are operating here, and both are increasing speeds, but from what I'm gathering is that they're cherry picking, they're kind of using that backbone model that you guys referred to as, they're, they're taking the areas that are most likely have the ability to pay. So what do we do about that? Or is there anything we can do?
So frequently we will see nationwide that incumbent providers such as Northland and Calor will build out into areas where there's going to be the highest rate of return. And that's understandable. It is called cherry picking, and it's a understandable business model that they would only want to invest in infrastructure that's going to access areas with a return. One of the city's options is that they could offer some sort of incentive to encourage Calor and Northland to deploy in areas where it's not available. Now, what that might look like is some sort of subsidization or cash incentive to get those incumbent providers into that area.
Are you referring to like public financing?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Is that what we would consider public financing? In other words, we could finance it publicly and Cal or, or Northland could jump on using our ability to get funds and have a longer term for a return on investment?
I'm going to defer that to Tom.
And, uh, that's my last question. I'm tired of boring these people here.
Tom, are you there?
Yeah, I'm there. When you, when you talk on my phone, I just hear echoes. So the question, the question that you just caught part of it? And was it talking about the cost of borrowing versus Northland or, or the other?
Uh, the quick ques, the quick question, and I'll let it go, is, do you think, based on any of these models, that public financing would encourage companies like Calor or Northland or possibly Hunter to invest by using public funds? I just, I didn't, I just, just asking. All right. I'd just like to say thank you, guys, and I guess we can hang up now. I don't think we're going to get an answer. I'm okay. I probably already know the answer.
I have a question.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Information, that's fine. Thank you, Nick. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just said... Hi, my name is Christina Horbux, and, um, I was born here in Weed. I'm actually from Santa Cruz now, that's where I reside. I currently work, um, for a cannabis company, Mary's Medicinals, headquartered out of Colorado. So we've been around, fully licensed now, in, um, California. Um, and so my job has brought me to Weed, which is life. It's a little bittersweet. My father, Darryl Brooks, you may know him, he did the Weed Arch, he was part of the revitalization of the mercantile. He did that sign right there. Sorry if I get a little emotional. Um, and last year I spent, um, last summer I spent about, um, four months here cleaning out his old ranch house that he lived out there on Company Springs. Um, and when I was doing that, he kept every single pattern that he did for this town. So my father also did the Weed Fire Department. Sorry if I sound a little shaky, a little emotional, and I didn't come with a big agenda or anything fancy. But, um, yes, he did the Arch, he worked with Vaughn Dillman's. I know that was a project that involved the elementary school. And, um, the Welcome to Weeds that once were very beautiful and hand-done, um, the souvenir shop, um, you know, the list goes on and on. My point being is that if there is ever funding to re-divitalize downtown, I just want to make it aware that I do have all of his original patterns. Um, so that's something to consider, and, um, I'm, I'm here to be a part of this community. I hold it very near and dear to my heart. I grew up in this area till I was 14, so it saddens me when I walk through Weed and see that it's a ghost town and remember it as very beautiful and vital at one time. And it sure would be nice if we could get that back, and I have the patterns to kind of do that.
And I have some people for you to meet.
Well, I'm thinking you also need to give your contact information to the museum.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And, um, you know, like the huge, I don't know if you remember the Y Steakhouse with the huge cowboy? That was my dad's, I have that. Um, you know, the original high-low menu, um, you know, just all of those different things. So I just wanted to bring that.
That's cool.
Elizabeth suggested that I come to this meeting, so I drove up to the area to be here.
Welcome back.
And thank you for the offer, sincerely, yes, it's great. Thank you.
Elizabeth Taber, 242 Main Street. Sure. Um, I just came to give a quick little report. Um, the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration came up today to visit the Northern area to any licensed cannabis businesses that they could make contact with. Um, I was the only one they were able to reach in the city of Weed. Uh, they also visited, uh, Mount Shasta, and then they were going to Shasta Lake and south. So it was a wonderful visit. I was glad that they came up, um, just checked to make sure that we had the newest information of the tax laws, uh, you know, checked our certificate of our wholesale permit, um, kind of went over the new changes that are going to start effective on July 1st, again, for the next six months. Um, it's a really nice visit, nice gentleman, you know, came in with their badges and just talked about the, you know, financial situations and, and the new changes and stuff to the state. But they are out visiting, um, the Bureau's visited, so they, I mean, these departments that we have to answer to are taking this serious and making their presence known, so I just thought I would report that they visited today.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I want to also just thank you for your interpretation and communication when I've come to explain the confidentiality of how your business is run with the patients and the people. I think that's good to know for the people of Weed, that you do have some expertise and professionalism in that avenue, and I think that's good to know, based on all the changes that are coming all the time to add you.
Yeah, thank you.
It's good to know about your systems in place.
Um, and kind of going on to the fiber optic thing, um, because we're with Northland as far as our phone and internet goes, and everything with our state reporting and what we do goes through the internet. So our internet is, is crucial to our operations. If the internet crashes, basically, our business, you know, it stops until the internet comes back up. Um, and in Mount Shasta, I think our monthly bill is like, it's a little under 200. And when they were coming and presenting this new fiber optic, right?
Broadband.
It was going to be, or broadband, whatever, it, we were going to go up to almost $400 a month. And I was like, what? The speed is great and, and the things that they said they offered, but, um, I know that Northland also just made some increases, and our internet and speed has been great. They've done some construction on Main Street right now, uh, in Mount Shasta, so it was down just for a little while. But, you know, I don't know exactly what the city or what the company is looking forward to, but I was like, on a business end, I mean, $400 to $500 a month for internet and phone was a little crazy for small businesses, just putting that out there.
Is your internet in Mount Shasta and Weed the same?
Both, or Northland.
They're both good?
Mm-hmm. We have the highest, whatever those thingies are.
Yes, I...
Yeah, thank you. I have kids that take care of that for me. Um, I have, just recently, we only had a little bit of a glitch here in Weed, but I don't know if that's because they're working on all this situation, but we've never had a problem, it's never been too slow, download's been fine, so, I mean, as far as on the business end. But when it comes to like maybe police, hospitals that probably use that a lot, I mean, I don't know what their requirements are, but I found it personally for home and business kind of expensive.
And I would just let, thank you, just let everybody know that this contract that we had with CTC is now over. However, the committee is, in Mount Shasta, Weed, and Dunsmere are going to continue to meet to figure out how we can make this work if we can. So we're not done. Their part is now done, which was primarily, it seemed to be more educational for us than anything, so.
Oh, right. Okay, thank you.
We have a star in the neighborhood.
Good evening, my name's Kyle Foster, I'm from Redding, California, and I am the Lieutenant Commander of the Mount Shasta Area Office of the California Highway Patrol. Uh, I wanted to take this moment to introduce myself to the council. Um, I've been in Northern California for four years and came up from San Jose. I was the, uh, Field Operations Officer and Acting Commander of Redding for about a year, year and a half, and then I was the aide to our chiefs at our division doing administrative work, and then I came up to Mount Shasta in January and was the interim commander, and as of July 1st, I'll be the permanent commander. Most people don't know what we do for the Highway Patrol, what our role, and how we interact with our municipalities and our cities. So Mount Shasta CHP, I have 23 sworn officers, 19 officers, three sergeants, and myself. And we have a service area that goes from, uh, Shasta County, Lemoine, all the way up to Weed in Siskiyou County, so we actually service parts of two counties. Uh, we have sister offices in Dunsmere, which is our commercial vehicle enforcement facility, and also Wyrica, which takes up the north part of the county up to the Oregon border. Our role is we work in unincorporated areas, we do traffic enforcement, and we also have authority for all state facilities and all state, uh, workers. What I, my goal for being up here is, for instance, I've been talking with Chief Nicholas, is to provide additional resources to all of our municipalities and all the cities within my purview. Uh, most recently, we brought advanced road...
What? An update, Ron.
Paul Ruder can probably give you an update, but, um, the, uh, he was in community yesterday to meet with two property owners to look, and it depends quite honestly on how much he gets accomplished between now and then. One of the reasons why you haven't had a report up to this point is how long it took for the state to complete the grant award to us. We didn't want to spend time and money with the engineer until the grant was in place. The grant document itself said that anything we spent prior to the execution of the grant agreement would not be reimbursed, but everything after would be.
Talking about it. And so I think that's great. Well, we have something coming up.
Yeah, the two items he was looking at, um, this week was George Kay's property and, um, the, uh, the North Bowls, um, Spring, um, looking at that property, walking out with Roseburg.
We appreciate whatever update you have with the environment.
That's a good point, we can use an update, I think.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll add one thing is that I'm also a board member on the Resource Centers, so I would like to take the time to plug the Resource Centers, since we're all doing plugs here tonight, is that they do have a summer camp ongoing, they have 30 kids in attendance. Joining in with Sue is that they also serve the kids all lunch. Uh, and I would say that, uh, there's been, they went out, the Resource Centers went out and got donations to carry a great bill... and got donations to carry a great deal of the expense. And also, the kids have to pay, but it's by far a lot, they pay a lot less than they would have to regularly. And also, the seniors are still up to about 45 meals every Monday. Plus exercise and a little bit of bingo every once in a while. They're enjoying it. Okay, that's it. Let's move on to item six, public hearing. Great Northern parcel map, 780 South Davis Avenue, 1.46 acres divided into four parcels. Planning Commission recommended approval of project with conditions and notice of exemption to go before City Council. Can I get a staff report?
You may. The purpose of this review is to consider the Great Northern Services parcel map and a potential notice of exemption under SEQA. The parcel map is divided into four new parcels. It currently is divided into two parcels. If you remember, one was the old library and the other parcel was sold to the Recreation and Parks District for the community center. The Great Northern has acquired that property from the Recreation and Parks District. So, we're going from two to four. The Planning Commission originally saw this in January. At that time, it was a vesting tentative map because it was looking at a greater number of parcels. But, if you're looking at only four, it can be the shorter subdivision process allowed for under the government code. The project's purpose is to construct housing. The project proposed to be constructed in two phases. Phase one is to be Parcels 1 and 2, which would be single-family homes that Great Northern is working with students from Cal Poly, San Luis Obispo to design. And perhaps, they will even do construction. The two parcels would be, the two single-family parcels would be the front two lots or essentially what was the library. The access to the individual parcels is proposed via private lane located on the western boundary of the property. It is already paved, it's already in existence. And for the most part, it was the parking for those two facilities prior to the fire. The project is subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. We've, staff has completed an initial review and finds that it can be found exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines Section 15332. Those guidelines define infill project. And clearly, residential construction in that particular place is infill because it's surrounded either by the elementary school and its properties, primarily playing fields. On the western boundary, some bus barn and other facilities of the school. And on the north and the east, by single-family residences. The zoning of this particular property is R4. And R4 does allow for all the uses in an R1 district, so it allows for single-family homes, but it also allows for some multifamily parcels. The, there are two issues. Before I get to that, I should tell you that the parcels meet the minimum parcel size required for the district. And the general plan has been found by the Planning Commission to be consistent with the goals and policies set forth in the Weed General Plan. There apparently were two issues that were discussed or should be discussed by the council. There was some discussion of whether it was appropriate to have an easement access rather than a dedicated roadway. And ultimately, the Planning Commission voted for one to accept that particular method of access. Commissioner Pelfini voted no, and his primary reason for doing so appeared to be the roadway access. There were eight conditions of approval. They're attached to your documentation in your file. One of those was incorrectly presented by Keith to the Planning Commission, and he's attempting to correct it with his memo to you. There was some discussion about what would be allowed on the last two parcels, whether they'd be limited to, to single-family or whether they would be available for more multifamily development. These two lots are much larger. And therefore, staff had agreed with the applicant that there could be as large as a triplex on those properties. But, when Keith presented it to the Planning Commission, he presented the condition of approval as being duplexes. We would like you to consider correcting that particular condition of approval. With that, I would answer any questions you might have.
Correcting that condition, you want to make it to the R4, which would allow the triplexes? Or would you like to continue it as an R1 or R2?
No, I'd like to make, I'd like to leave the zoning on the property R4.
So, that would allow up to a fourplex, right?
Well, it would except for the condition of approval on the flat. You can limit the development. The reason we didn't want to go to fourplex is because of the topography of the site. The topography of the site makes it difficult for a structure of a normal size plus parking for a fourplex. And we had some concerns about fire and ambulance access to the back portion if they were too, too dense of a development. With the private driveway, we thought it best to limit it to three.
I have an access question. So, is the, is there still the alleyway between the backside of this and the houses that run down South Davis? There was an alleyway that you could?
There is still an alleyway there.
And is that in city possession or is that in?
That's city ownership.
Okay, so that'll stay?
Yes.
Just, does that, Craig, does that alley go all the way? Doesn't it just go down and come back up the other side?
The one down at the very bottom?
Nope, the one right behind.
The old Great Northern.
Okay, remember, they had the food below at the bottom of the?
Yes.
And that's, they would drive down there and then they would come back up into that parking lot?
Doesn't it?
Yeah, they used to be able to do that. That alley is not, the city's alley is down by Shasta.
Farther down?
Yes.
So, but you can go down that and it goes down, it doesn't hook to the one?
So, that, actually, I think what you're referring to was not an alleyway.
It was a driveway.
It was a driveway.
Yeah, but it does not connect, can?
The city alley is behind the,
Residential.
The residential lots on Davis.
So, I'm looking at, let's see. The one that, where the, yeah, where they used to drive around their back. So, this driveway that's right here where they would go in and then they'd come back up this way? Is that still going to be available? Do they need it for those?
I cannot tell you that it is, it's not a condition of approval. Rod might be able to tell you since he happens to own, personally own the properties to the east and tends to use that for access to the back of his properties. I'm sure that Great Northern is probably not going to cut Rod's access off. But, it's not a publicly dedicated roadway and it's not required to meet minimum standards of roadways for the city.
I just want to make sure that people still have access.
Uh, yeah.
We were talking about earlier, but the cost of the site improvements to do those seven lots was much more, much higher than the ratio of going of four lots to seven lots. Our development costs actually went down by, to a third of what it was by going from seven lots to four lots. So we decided to have less lots, bigger lots, nicer lots. The other main obstacle that we got rid of by going from seven lots to four lots was that we are not required in doing a four lot subdivision to have an HOA, which is a big, huge hassle to create, and that was one of the incentives for going to four lots. So our plan with this was, since we're not required to, was not to create an HOA. The road will be in perfectly good condition at the time the lots are sold, and just like anybody's driveway, the owners will be responsible for maintaining them.
But you're gonna have four houses driving across those driveways.
I understand your point.
Or parking on them in the middle like they used to.
So again, in a prior life, you must have been a Realtor, I can tell, but, and I get that, and I get the profit motives in doing all of this. And I would also, I would be willing to say when you sell a lot, a portion of whatever you're doing is contributed back to some sort of fund to address this issue. I'm not saying just give us all the money now, I'm a man of reason and I know that people, if you want to develop something, I would like to see more development. But I would like the pie sweetened a little bit.
So if possible, I would like to eliminate the word profit from this discussion because there isn't gonna be any. We, the economics of the real estate market at the moment, houses sell for less than the cost to build one. Ron mentioned in his report that we're working with Cal Poly's School of Architecture and Construction Management, and we plan to do that through construction as well. We're also in discussions with COS to hopefully develop a construction program and hope to work with them through construction as well. If we weren't doing that, we couldn't do it, and as is, between what it's still going to cost us and the cost of site improvement, we're not making money on this, it's just, you know.
But truthfully, when you improve a lot, it also improves the price. That would be, in other words, if you have a gravel road and you sell me a lot, that lot's worth one thing. If you sell me a lot with an improvement on it, it's worth more. Is that too simple for me?
My point is that it costs, I'm just gonna throw out some round numbers here. It costs roughly $250,000 to build a house, you can sell that house for 200. So yes, it's worth more, but it's not worth the cost of building a house, which is why we're working with Cal Poly and COS.
I hear you, I'm not buying it completely, but I hear you. I'm sorry, just, the price of real estate's moving up all the time.
That's true.
Yeah.
There have not been too many sales.
You're also not affording regular building costs, I mean, Cal Poly is coming up to give you plans, it has X amount of dollars value. You're getting administrative charges on building, I would say probably 18, $20,000 worth of value when you do plans. I sell insurance, and when we divvy up the proceeds for an insurance settlement, when we get to the part that says primarily shortened up paperwork, yeah, there's a significant amount of change in there for paperwork, so.
Well, going back to my numbers, rather than spending $250,000 to build a house, we're spending 200, so we can sell it for 200.
Okay, I hear you.
Okay, back to the road.
It's back to, yeah, well, back to the road for you, I actually kind of went through mine, do you, I don't know if any council, that is, that's my main objection to this, I would like, if one of yours is the R1 zone, I mean, we need to speak up now because once we approve, it's done.
Does R2 mean that it can be a duplex and R3 means a threeplex and four means a fourplex?
Yep, or less.
Yeah, it's not quite that, but yes, that's pretty much what it is. R1 is a single family, R2 allows duplexes, and R3 allows apartments and multifamily.
Because that's, once we get an apartment, that's where I have a problem. I don't think I have a problem with a duplex, as long as I don't owe it.
Or a single family home.
Does R2 also allow professional use?
I'd have to go back to my office in order to pull my cheat sheet.
That's okay.
I haven't got it memorized.
R2, like, I think, does it allow professional use? So if I was a practicing attorney.
Huh? I think you have to go to R3 for anything non-residential, but I could be wrong.
Okay.
That's my understanding as well.
So just one point on the current zoning, I already made the point that this is one of the only R4 lots. What we're asking for here is a four-unit subdivision or parcel map with the ability to build up to triplexes, may or may not ever get built. We have very well-established plans to put a single-family house on parcel one right now. So looking at the remaining three lots, if somebody were to come along and build triplexes on the other three, that would be a maximum of 10 units. I can almost guarantee that that maximum would never be reached. The current zoning for that property actually allows a 20-plus unit apartment building. I'm sure I would be having a very different discussion with you and would have had a different discussion with Ron at a pre-application meeting if I wanted to build a 20-plus unit apartment building, but that's what the zoning allows, I'm asking for a lot less than that.
And I recognize it was also a commercial building prior to, when Great Northern had their, and we had the community center up there, so there was traffic. I'm just saying, do we step back or do we step forward? That's for me anyway. That was a very expensive adventure up on that hill, so we know what I'm talking about, don't we? So, those are my objections, I don't know if anybody else has questions.
Mine is just, I like the apartment idea because of housing challenges that we have here that I've heard from people that have moved back into town that have bought different places. And so that just highly interests me, that's my only piece.
So you're the other direction?
Yes.
That's what makes up the city council?
Close to schools and just appropriate for some housing challenges that some people have.
And my, I'm okay with a duplex, my thought on that is we have plenty of apartments here in our town that.
They need homes.
Yeah, that we need homes. So, and I've looked at the plans, I've been down at Great Northern and looked at the plans, and there's the four homes, and they're lovely, they're nice. Yeah, they're good. I like the light, you know, with the, it's got the whole light thing going on with the morning and evening sun, which is great.
She was referring to the clear-story roof of our first design, which is one of those split-level roofs with windows on top.
Yeah, so it's lighted.
Salt box, is that what you call that, is that what you said?
I haven't heard that term, but maybe.
I think it's a salt box design.
So we're just to decide if it's the map, we're talking about the map.
Do we want, our decision is, do we want to approve it as it is, or do we want to approve it as amended, and we can make those amendments now, and?
Well, we have to amend because we have to take out number nine, so it's still on there.
And as far as the road, which I think, what you're talking about is people just coming in and shooting across that parking lot and going into their garage.
And eventually that's gonna deteriorate, I mean.
But that's the school's problem, right?
Well, I'm not worried about their parking lot, I'm worried about the access to the four houses. If that road deteriorates, they're gonna have ground.
Because it's going to be their private road.
Yeah.
Similar to another one that's out in South Weet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so once it becomes a private road, we don't have, we have power now. Am I misunderstanding that? I mean, we have a right to amend the parcel map now. Once we do this, pretty much he knows what his, what he can. Once we do this, pretty much, he knows what his, what he can do with that piece of property. And those are their decisions.
Okay, so, I live on one of those roads, and it becomes a private drive, like, right in the middle of my yard. And there's four houses back there. And they do maintenance on that road every year. So, is that something that they, I don't know if they just do it voluntarily, or if that's, they bring in gravel, they're all out there, they...
Are you back by Mickel, I mean, by Mickelawn, is that where you're talking, Mickelawn?
I'm by Dennis and my Dross.
Dross, right, I'm sorry.
And so, they bring in gravel, and, you know, they take, they planted their trees, and...
The, the civil code provides that when people share an easement, they're required to share the cost of maintaining it.
But, like, the city doesn't...
The city's not involved.
The city doesn't have to plow there. They don't, they don't, they don't assist them in do...
No.
And then, and then homeowners, I've never heard them complain about it, because that's, they knew it when they bought their homes. So, is that, would it be similar to that? Okay.
That's interesting, because the property that my parents own on Lincoln, on Rebel Avenue, that's also an easement owned by the, the company, the mill, and grabbing gains. And that has never been, in all my life, never been addressed.
Yeah, it's interesting. The, the, a portion of the cost is based upon the usage, so you might have a property owner who doesn't use it at all, and it's not, and another property owner that uses it all the time. A court would look at that and say, "Well, we're gonna make the one that uses it pay for the maintenance cost."
That's very interesting.
I guess these neighbors just have a gentleman's agreement, then, because they all, they're all out there.
Well, two of our brothers, they're gonna have an agreement just to coexist.
Not necessarily.
Oh, I know that.
Well, it doesn't even live here anymore. But our house is still empty.
We can actually address this. You're gonna have CCNRs on that property, you're not gonna have...
No, that was my point earlier. We're, by going to four units, we're not required to.
So, it'll be left with a civil code. Otherwise, the CCNRs could address the maintenance cost.
So, advise us, Bob, what are you thinking? Is it a good idea to have a road, or a bad idea to have a road?
These are very common, you know. There, there are lots and lots of situations where people share easements, driveways, whatnot. I, I think, my personal feeling is that the fear that they're gonna try to pawn it off on the city 10 years from now is, is, is really slim. And you wouldn't have to take it.
It's in the wide open, and if it, if it goes bad, we have gravel, and that's all we've got is gravel. And I don't live in a city to have gravel roads.
Yeah, that's a different question.
If I lived in the country, I would expect...
I don't have an opinion on that. I'm just talking about the, what you expressed about the city might end up with it. That isn't really on the radar.
We wouldn't take it. It's kind of a mute issue. So, any other questions? Anybody, any proposed, we have to, we have to make this guy...
We have to approve this with the amendment?
Whatever we want to amend it to. So, if there's a proposal that, if you want to make a proposal with specific amendments, those amendments can be amended, and amended, and amended.
Or we can just check their recommendation.
Do we have to stay in public hearing to do all this?
Yes.
Staff has a recommendation, so we can...
Oh, actually, since there's no objections, we can go out of the public hearing phase and, and go to a city disca- council discussion only. So be it. Okay, any discussion between city council members here?
Mr. Mayor, just my re-ification of the re-commission by the staff, that, Chris, how you just showed it, with the amendments.
Yeah, with the...
Number nine.
Number nine.
Yes. And the road piece, that, I'm not sure we came to agreement on that.
So, remove amendment nine? Okay.
And what, what do we decide on the road?
Well, it's not an amendment yet. They, they, not that they took it out already, it's still there.
Well, we still have to remove it for the...
And our public utilities and fire chief and police are all good with it also, I'm assuming? Yeah.
With the road?
I agree with everything.
I'm convinced that road problem is gonna be Weed Elementary School, not, because it's their parking lot out there.
But I would like, I, I would like to amend that to add something in for the road development. And I would also like to add in, if you, if you want to keep it to duplex.
I would like to keep it to duplex. You say nothing bigger than a duplex?
If you do number, if you do R2.
Yeah.
Shall we amend it, amend to R2?
I have a question on that. Why not to the apartment complex, or...
We have plenty of apartment complexes.
And the owner has his view.
Well, everybody's got an opinion.
The owner doesn't live next door.
I own the property next door.
You don't live next door.
Yeah, I live there.
I live next door to it.
When you move it in?
There's a difference.
When you move it in, Rod?
She might have to accuse herself.
Well...
What kind of road improvements, are there different grades of road improvements, Craig?
Yeah, it would be a subdivision road. It would have to meet city standards.
Is there anything less than that?
We could adopt the lesson that, than that, like we did out on the Newton subdivision, where we're gonna do sidewalks and stuff like that on the Newton subdivision.
I think he's got a sidewalk. Isn't there a sidewalk there already?
Yeah.
Oh, it'll be removed, you think? Because of...
It's still there?
It's being added to, actually. And what, what's there doesn't run the, the full length of what's going to be required.
But it's not gonna be changed and, and moved.
Well, actually, some curb caps will be required.
Yeah, it's gonna, you're gonna have driveways into it, yeah.
So, that's called a subdivision road?
Well, yeah. If it's gonna be a public road, it needs to meet different standards, but...
Well, it's, it's gonna be a private road. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
So, if it's a private road, we can, can we make any requirements at this point?
The only thing we can make requirements on a private road is to have access for the fire engines to be able to turn around and that kind of stuff.
But we can't, we can't require them to keep it at a certain level of, okay, so really, we can't say anything?
Yeah. And there's a cul-de-sac for the fire truck to turn around.
Oh, you guys put a wrench in my works.
It makes the decision easier.
Wait a minute, I don't want your phone. Okay. Where are we here?
Are you, are you making it?
Make a motion to amend, to take off number nine and not let it be any more than duplexes?
You want to make a motion to approve the Great Northern parcel map at 780 South Davis Avenue to remove item nine on conditions? Is that what it, was it a condition? And amend the zoning to R2?
Yes.
There you go.
I'll second that.
You can't amend the zoning as part of this process.
Oh, we can't?
No, you can't amend the zoning, no. You can place restrictions on the development, but you can't change the zoning.
Oh, okay, so the, place restrictions on it...
So, we can say that, that any of the development can't have more than a duplex?
This is a learning process.
I believe you could say that, but you, you, the zoning is the zoning. That, that's a different process, that's a different...
So, we'd have to go back to the planning commission for the zoning change?
If you're gonna change the zoning. Now, if you want to place a restriction on this particular development without changing the zoning, that's a different matter.
Well, because the plans are four homes, single-family homes, right?
Right. So, far, but like Rod said, Rod, Rod may be here, Rod may not, I mean...
None of us mean.
That's what I would like to do, limit development on the lots to duplexes.
So, so, we want to approve the Great Northern parcel map, 780 South Davis Avenue, by removing amendment number nine, condition number nine, and require that the conditions of the parcel be limited to a duplex, or less.
Yeah, homes are duplexes, single-family homes are duplexes.
She shall move.
I'll second it.
Is that all legit, and up and running on that one?
That'll work.
Okay. All in favor?
That'll work.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
I didn't get my road. I'm a little miffed, but I'm, I'm gonna live with it.
I didn't get my hypothetical triplexes.
But you may not even be around six.
Well, you know, if they, well, when you may come back here, we may not be here.
Actually, can I ask Bob a question?
Sure.
You, you mentioned they can't change the, the zoning, have limited the development. That's it. Is, is there any, any rights to go back on that later?
Well, you can always ma- make a application to amend your map at any point in the future, including the map conditions.
Because the zoning theoretically would still allow a fourplex.
But for the map, yes, that's the case. So, yeah, you, you'd, you'd still be within your zoning rights to come back and say, you know, the way this area's developed, I think a triplex would be just fine, and ask the council to adopt a, a modified map. You could do that five years from now, or next month, whatever. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we're done with that. Let's try and breeze through a little bit. We're on to, to the regular agenda. Item A, item A, City Council Representation for League Annual Conference. Council considers selection of voting delegate and voting delegate alternate for the League of California Cities in Long Beach.
Please note that you do have until July 31st to make a decision, but we wanted to bring the dates to you, September 12th to 14th, so that you could discuss among yourself whether any member of the council is planning on attending. And, and in that process, if you find that one or more council members are planning on attending, it would be possible for you to name them as your voting delegates.
Okay, I need to clarify something on this. I think it's a typo, but on the backside, halfway down the page, it says, "The Voting Delegate Desk Located in the Conference Registration Area of the Sacramento Convention Center."
That's last year's, apparently.
Okay. I, I went, oh, we're in Long Beach, oh, we're in Sacramento, people are gonna be in Sacramento voting, are they...
We're gonna send you down to sign up in Sacramento. The rest of us are gonna be in Long Beach.
They might Skype it, you know, and you could be in the room.
You know, computers have made us all lazy.
Yes.
We take last year's document, we modify it.
I do the same, I do the same thing, and I, and I always have to amend my letter, because I'd miss something, so...
If we leave four days early, we can catch the daylight.
Right.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to attend.
Okay, so, yes, that's a typo.
But it's pursuant on running again for November, because I want it ten, and maybe gone in two months. So, I don't know if that's a factor, but I enjoyed when I first went...
When we, when we see your papers, we're gonna be talking.
When I first went with the marijuana, but, but, um, Ron and I, we were part of those early meetings, and I think that helped my understanding, and I think it's gonna be good to help that going forward, if that's possible. I'd like to go because of that. I saw some of the subject matters.
Okay.
And the new government organization that they have been created two years ago, they're fully running now, and I think that would help us.
I just wanna go down for a steak dinner. I'm, I'm, I'm not, pretty simple.
Anyone else, exit? You don't want to go to Long Beach?
In other words, I'm supposed to get an invitation for you, all right?
I travel enough, so I have no desire to go unless I'll be the last, I'll be the last alternate.
Flying first class or coach?
You're flying Southwest for $49.
$49.
Or are we flying out of San Francisco? Anyway, I can, yeah. Okay. We, we can, we can hammer that down, so everybody will know what's going on. Let's move on to item B, Public Safety Department, Fire Department, council, oh, let me go back up a step, regular agenda. We want to add an item to the agenda that was presented to us after the agenda was created.
As urgent.
And that would be item number F, a budget capital purchase from, with the Fire Department. Okay, so now we'll move on to item B, Public Safety Department, Fire Department. Council will consider approval to purchase needed equipment for Fire Department sole-source bid, which means we only got one respondent? Okay.
The request is being made in order to properly outfit with radios, lights, and other necessary equipment, the new truck that you authorized us to purchase for the Fire Department. That truck should be delivered in the month. And...
We'll have another parade for you. We'll have another parade for you, for that truck.
Oh, yes, we'll have a parade.
Steve, you should drive the museum truck.
Well, that one does have an increase.
It does, yeah. So, is that it for the staff report, or do, does everybody looked at this?
I did. My only question's budget, how, how does it affect the budget? That's the most important thing.
When we did the, the truck purchase, what we told you was that we had put together the budget, assuming that we were going to have two full-time people for the entire 12 months of the fiscal year. Because of another, of an earlier grant, and our ability to be able to change that grant, so that we were able to cover salaries from the grant, we ended up over-budgeting personnel, and we asked you if we could use that for this piece of equipment for him. And that's sufficient to cover not only the purchase of the, of the truck, but also this equipment.
Okay. I know that there's other, I'm, I, nothing.
Is, is that, is that grant paying for both of them for the year? Is it enough for both of them?
No, it only paid through February.
Oh, okay. Cool.
I'll make a motion to approve the capital budget, or budgeted capital purchase.
I will second that. As much as I wanted him to just turn on the lights and screen out the window, but...
Okay. We, we got a first, we got a second, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't remember even the truck, so I'm, it must've been a meeting I missed.
We, we don't want him to lose his voice. On to item C, Public Works Department. Council will consid- council will consider approval of contract with Omni Means, subject to EDA approval.
We don't yet have EDA approval, but I want to tell you about the process that we've gone through. We went out to, once we received the grant award from EDA, we put together a request for proposals that we submitted to EDA, and EDA approved. We went out to bid, and we got only one respondent. We submitted that, that process to EDA, and they were not happy with only having one respondent. They said we'd like to have a minimum of three. So, we talked to them about how we could re-advertise on a regional basis. They accepted a proposal from us to advertise in the Reddy Newspaper and the Wayrica Newspaper, as well as our local newspaper. We went out to advertise, and we got two respondents. So, we submitted that to EPA, and I said, "Okay, we're happy with that." Write a contract with Omni Means, which was our preferred choice. The, the contract terms and provisions are primarily what EDA requires. We have completed the negotiations for the contract, submitted it to EPA. We'd like the, the consultants to begin work as soon as EDA signs off. So, rather than waiting until July, after we had EDA approval, we brought to you with the request that you approve it, provided that EDA also accepts the agreement as, as submitted. If they do not, and we have to rewrite it, we'll come back to you as well. Craig handled the negotiation for the contract, so I'm going to ask him to answer any questions if you have specific questions about what work is going to be performed.
This isn't the work itself, this is just the engineering portion?
Just the engineering process, so it would be designing the final plans that are sufficient to go out to bid, providing services to us through the process of bidding and award, and then doing construction management during the... and award, and then doing construction management during the, the construction. Construction management includes regular and periodic inspections to make sure that the work is done in accordance with the plans, reviewing the bills to make sure that they're consistent with the contract that is awarded, and doing paperwork. And that's the most important thing to Craig and I, doing the paperwork to submit to EDA so that EDA approves the payment.
So, this is about $630,000? Did I get the numbers right, or close? I saw $392, but there was another figure in there for $238.
Yeah, but that, that's all included.
Okay.
The $392 is the maximum amount, which has been in the budget for engineering services.
Right.
So, we're not asking to up the engineering services.
Okay.
My only question is within the project, the timing, because I know what we have currently there, there's been a hole. I think it's been too long. And so, my question is that is built into this piece, visibility to act, I don't know how to say that differently, because since I've been on council, and we've come back to this, we've been pretty quick earlier to, to kind of fix it. This has taken longer, and are there any factors because of that, or is that something we should look at or do?
I just think, I think the crew's just not gotten to it yet, is what would be my opinion. This is just engineering.
Yeah, this is just the engineering, the construction level of this. When EDA approves this, they've approved the grant, so now they need to approve this, and then we can move on, get the paperwork done to be approved for construction. And in our construction budget, prior to even hiring this engineer, we have it built in for inflation and that kind of stuff. We've got a pretty good budget sitting there.
I'm talking about the timing of it being corrected, because that seems to be longer than it has before. Am I incorrect in seeing that with the hole that's on the south side? Is that considered part of this?
Yes, it'll all be concrete.
Isn't, isn't the link due to us getting the grant money?
It's gonna be a year before we get that grant money, am I mistaken?
No, I mean, the length of us putting this together to actually fix it was, as applied for a grant.
Yeah, and we've done temporary patches out there, and as a matter of fact, Caltrans is gonna have that freeway closed next Monday. I'm trying to coordinate today so we can get in and cut that patch out next Monday while we have no...
It would be great, because we have a couple contentious issues coming up, and having that road at least in good repair would probably smooth a few feathers just to start off.
I'll just ask some based on the scope, is timing involved with it? Because I think it's been a little bit longer than we had before, waiting for, and whatever reasons. I'm just...
Well, it's hard to put money into something we're gonna just tear up. So, we just tend to wanna keep a Band-Aid on it until we get this project done.
One of the reasons that we're trying to push the envelope a little bit by bringing it to you before we have EDA approval is that the next 30 days is important to us. The amount of work that the engineer has in order to get ready to go out to bid is gonna take about six months. And if you count six months from today, that means we're probably gonna be going out to bid in January. That is really a good time for us to get a good price. If we are going out to bid in March, they may already have bid on projects, they may have a contract underway, and we may have fewer bidders. If we have fewer bidders, we might have a less competitive price. So, we're kind of pushing the envelope in order to get construction started in 2019. I should tell you one of the reasons why we selected OmniMeans. It was Craig, Martin, and myself that did the interviews with the architectural firms that, and engineering firms that came forward to make a presentation to us. What OmniMeans had was, first of all, experience with EDA projects and with EDA paperwork. But in their presentation, they told us how important it was to keep access available to every business during the entire construction time period. And they were even thinking far enough ahead that they could identify ways in which every one of the businesses could be, remain open. The difficult ones are going to be the ones on the south side of the roadway, Chevron, Burger King, Taco Bell. And when they put the concrete in front of those three businesses, eliminating their primary access point, that concrete, first of all, they're gonna dig it out, so there are gonna be a few days of that. But once the concrete gets set, it has to cure for 20 days. So, their primary entry point is gonna be closed for almost 30 days. But every one of them has a secondary access. Taco Bell has a secondary access off of Black Butte, and Chevron and Burger King have a secondary access off of the private roadway that's between the two of them. With the proper signage and the proper phasing of construction, we can keep those businesses open. And when they stress that point to us, we figured they were the ones that understood the project the best.
Well, I move that we accept the contract on Vista Drive Rehab with OmniMeans.
I will second that.
You won't second it?
I will.
Oh, you will? I thought you said a what? What? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None opposed. Okay.
I wasn't sure what she said either.
It's getting late. It was a long meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Still light outside.
On to administration. Council will consider selecting date time for a work session concerning the Fire Department. I think this is a request by Steve, right?
Yeah.
And so, we can get all on the same page.
You know, Steve has been here long enough that he's beginning to understand both some of the problems that we have in our system and some approaches that may be taken in order to not only meet the current level of service in the future, but to increase that. Some of the proposals that he's come up with don't actually mesh with what the council has said in the past. But I wanna give him the opportunity to give you an explanation of why he thinks these are good approaches for us to take, and how he thinks we might be able to fund them, and give him an opportunity to sort of get you to buy in on some of the direction he would like to take with the Fire Department. He may not end up taking all of his suggestions, but he deserves an opportunity to present. The problem with council meetings is that they get filled up, like for an hour and a half of the public. We want the public to come, and we want them to speak, but it gets pretty late in the evening for a detailed presentation. We thought if you had a work session, the only item on it was the Fire Department, not only Steve, but other members of the department that wanna talk would have an opportunity to, to talk to you. Do you wanna say anything?
Yeah, just like you said, Brian and I are pretty new to the Fire Department here, although I'm not new to the Fire Department, just necessarily. So, we would like to sit down with you and discuss ideas and proposals and see how you guys feel about it and the direction they're gonna take. Mostly on staff.
Okay.
How about Tuesday? The 19th?
No can do on this side, I know that.
Evening, morning, or what are you timing?
I have a meeting all day, so I'll be, I'll be fresh out of brain contact.
What would you watch on the...
26, 27, Wednesday, Wednesday? How about Wednesday on the 20th or the 27th?
Wednesday, the 20th?
I'm available between 1:00 and 4:00.
On Wednesday? How about Thursday, the 21st?
Same.
How about the following week on the 26th?
I'm gone that whole entire week.
Okay. Then it's, then it's the holiday. And the holiday is gonna take us all...
I give you Monday, the 18th. Does that give you enough time? Next Monday?
Yeah. I give Monday, the 18th.
Thanks.
What time? And you don't...
Evening?
We could probably even go four to five, four. I don't know what time. Are you working that day?
Yeah, but all you, I'll be in town, but all you got, right?
How about you? Are you working?
I'm working till 8:00, but I can adjust.
What time do you go to work?
2:00. But I can have someone close.
Can you come before work?
I can't.
Oh, that's right, you have lunch.
On the 18th, for what day?
Soon we're all busy.
But I'm, I, as I've noticed, it's adjustable, because of my tenure, so.
So, where I can possibly suggest giving Sandy some dates, and then you can agree with them?
I think we can sell it right here. Let's shoot for the 18th. Let's shoot for five.
Monday, the 18th?
Five o'clock?
What?
18th on five, so Monday.
What? Oh, we're in June. I think it's July.
We're talking June, June, top one.
June, the 18th, at what time again?
Five o'clock?
Five.
I don't think we need total staff. We just need counsel, Steve, possibly yours, some, I don't even know.
Yeah.
Brian.
And can I ask, is it coming structured? I go to meetings in the other side.
Do we need to bring Martin to keep you guys in order?
Bullet points and budget, information here is gonna help out in our discussions, so it's like not a wish list.
He wants an agenda.
I just want it structured, because...
And a PowerPoint presentation.
I want it structured, so we have concept ideas, budgets, and some things that are in place, so things that are currently on board, we know they're talked about, so we know some numbers, numbers and...
Well, I think he wants to explain a direction. I think he's got numbers to support that, don't you?
Yeah.
Are we now here?
On how you propose to do it.
Can we hear?
Right. Does it have to be an open, does it have to be an open meeting?
Yeah, it does have to be.
Do we have enough time from now until Monday that we advertise the meeting? I don't know what those rules are.
Just see 24 hours for a special meeting.
Oh, okay.
The 18th, is it fine? Looks like you're busy tomorrow, too.
I'm busy tomorrow, and I will not be in town next week. I have a presenting training. Right. Sneak and take notes.
Kim will take notes.
You know, with the work session, although we need to, to post it, the intention is not to make it a legal meeting that you could actually vote.
Oh.
Oh, right, okay.
Okay. Cool.
Okay.
Monday is.
Monday is. Onto item E, Water for Citizens of Weed, California.
I...
WCWC.
I didn't know that Bob was gonna be here, and this is Bob's request that it go into the, into one of the city water bills. Would you mind if we delayed? I really don't wanna speak against what he's asking for without him being available.
Can we do it on the 18th? Or does that interfere with notices?
Can we do it next month?
We can do it next month.
Next month? Okay. So, we're gonna schedule this for July?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you would agree to it.
I move that we table item E.
Till next month?
Till July's regular meeting.
I will.
Get a second?
I second it.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, on to the last item F, which isn't on your agenda, and again, we have the weed
I'm constantly encouraging staff members to submit grant applications, and Steve is, has been doing that. I told him he has to come before the council at least once. Generally, if it includes local match, we try to come before. We've done a lot of time and effort, but it depends on how large that match is. I let him go forward to grant to the International Association of Fire Chiefs for $12,540 to do fuel break mitigation, primarily on city property. He received on Tuesday notification that his grant has been approved. It does have a $1,254 requirement for city match. He has in his budget $10,000 for fire break, so he has the money to be able to cover the, the city match.
So, that $1,200 will get us another $11,000.
It'll give you, actually, I think, $13,794. The reason we pushed it to ask you to, to consider it is that, you know, we're getting into fire season, and CAL FIRE is going to help do some of this. Some of this will be paying for CAL FIRE personnel. And they're, they wanna get on it now before there are some major fires. And, and so, they're chomping at the bit to go, and Steve said, how do we move this fast? And I said, we can add it to the agenda, because it came up after the agenda was prepared and posted.
When you do this, are we looking at, there are some public newest, nuisances out there regarding private property that have grass about yay high?
This is the dead wood crew coming in.
Okay.
To mitigate hazard around the water tanks and...
Okay, so none of that. So, but we have fire issues on...
We are working on that.
Okay.
On the 18th, he may be able to give you a breakdown on that, but he, he is advertising, and we're, are we putting it on the webpage?
Yeah, it's on the radio and newspaper.
Okay. He's basically telling people to get their, to get their weeds down by July 15th? Which is causing me to hire someone to get my weeds down.
You need to hire those two boys that I had.
I got my...
The mules.
I got a couple sleepers that are gonna come.
I move that we approve the budget capital purchase for the grant for International Association of Fire Chiefs for Ready, Set, Go program.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Tell Brian congratulations. That was Brian's grant.
This is how I like bringing up information with the grant approval. That's what my question's always about, the grants.
Okay.
Okay, I wanna remove something from the consent agenda before we provide, just have a question.
Okay.
I wanna remove the police service fees.
Okay. Any other items need to be removed?
I second that. We have to second it, right? I second it.
No, we don't need to.
I will move that we remove.
Remove, what, what letter is that?
D?
Public Police Service. That's policy. Oh, police. I better get some new glasses.
Yeah, I have a poker.
Okay, who, I do, but these are pretty strong. I'm just getting blinder, more blind. So, we're gonna remove item D from the consent agenda.
And then I will make a motion to pass the consent agenda.
Do I hear a second?
As amended, I, I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, aye, aye. Okay. Onto item D, Police Service Fees.
So, I, I looked at all of them, and I'm just wondering why you didn't up the dog impoundment to the fourth. So, it starts out, I guess that's first offense is what that means. It's $10, and it's going to 15, and then it's 20, and it's going to 30, and then it's 40, and it's going to 100, and then it's still 100? Shouldn't that one go up?
Reason that we didn't do that is because we raised the third one to the value that the fourth one was, and the likelihood of, of a fourth violation is pretty slim, and it really doesn't occur that often.
Okay. So, so are we taking the fourth one off or just alleviating it there?
Yes, it's removed. The fourth one is removed.
Okay. I just wanna make sure it wasn't a typo that we missed.
From here forward, the fourth one will be just another $100, and the fifth one is a hundred. Yeah.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Can I ask you a additional question?
Sure.
With that, maybe a status, because I know some things have happened with some dogs recently. Is there any type of concern you have for the area where they're being kept or saved from the officer or public or anything like that?
I'm, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Space, space issues. Is there any space issues?
Yeah, I'm not sure that, that there's, there's been anything brought to our attention that's a huge issue right at this point. Our concern is always, in particular, the tethering and, and leaving in a vehicle and those kind of things. Those issues are always there. But the majority of the, of the people that have the dogs have somewhere to walk them or take them or...
I'm talking about the storage for the police. Is it still past, you do McElhanes old place, the current place that's still past that road out there?
Oh, yes, yes, the pound itself. Yes, the pound itself.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. It's out at the sewer plant.
I just know some dogs.
Are there too many dogs out there? Is that what you're saying?
I know some people have lost some dogs and it's sad for me.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's, it's a uncovered cyclone fence. It's about, what, eight-foot cyclone fence? And whether people know it or not, some dogs can climb. And they'll, they'll get out of there.
Probably why they weren't in their yard in the first place.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
I used to have one, used to jump the fence and go sit in the intersection and mount shots. It's no lie either. Sunny, sunny himself. Getting warm. Okay, so we want a motion to approve the police fees. Any more questions?
I still move.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, staff reports. Steve?
He's doing the eighteen. I do have something that Chief Carter's putting it together right now for the mill. During the holiday, tomorrow, holiday, they shut their mill down to clean it up. And in the past, we own the confined space permit. We sign off on it. And until now, we've never had a team there to stand by. They just signed off on it in the past, probably because of staffing, but we did have a team stand by. And because of that, we're putting a presentation together for the administration of the mill. They really liked what we did. They felt safe when we were there. And because of that, they're looking at buying us some new confined space equipment. So.
Let me make him points. Nice guy.
Yeah.
All right, good job.
So, um, it was very good. So. That's all I have right now. I'm sorry.
Good. That's, that's good. Craig? Nothing?
Welcome back.
Yeah, you've been on vacation.
Yeah.
Surgery vacation. Martin? Sandy?
I just want to report that I have to be in training on this.
How much training does a person need? You don't want to go to Long Beach? We're going to Long Beach. The party's in Long Beach.
I think I'd rather go to Long Beach.
Ron?
The only thing that I want to report, I've told the council, but I want to tell the public that is listening on TV and the newspaper that tomorrow begins the forty-five days of public comment period on the environmental impact report for LOVES. That environmental impact report is going to be available here at City Hall. It's going to be available at the library. And by ten o'clock tomorrow morning, it will be posted on our website. So that the public can see any of the various chapters to that particular plan.
Can we modify it while it's on the website?
Well,
Just kidding.
Let me tell you, let me tell you the process so that, that we haven't had an actual environmental impact report in the last four years. And so, you may not be familiar with the process, but this is a draft report. And at the completion of the forty-five day period, it'll actually be forty-six days because the forty-fifth day falls on a Sunday. So, it'll end on July thirtieth. Then the contractor assent will have to include all of the comments that they receive during the comment period. And if any of the comments justify a modification, they have to make modifications. And the final report will be presented to the planning commission at its meeting on August fifteenth. This is a little different than other projects. It requires the same approvals as other projects. That is a condition use permit, architectural and design review and a sign permit. But it also requires the vacation of an existing subdivision and the vacation of a roadway that was dedicated to the public within that subdivision and the retention of an easement. So that we continue to have the ability to have the access points that we need in order to use the South Weed water tank. The, the only body that has the authority to grant those two approvals is the city council. So regardless of what action the planning commission takes, whether they approve, whether they deny, whether they take no action, regardless of their, their review, the matter has to come to the council for the council's action. Sometimes projects like grocery outlet, the final approval was given by the planning commission. It was never actually seen by the council. This one can't be done that way.
Okay.
My only concern is what we've all been thinking when it comes to this point, what, what, what we're gonna receive from, and I'm just, I've been thinking about that.
Is the rough draft gonna be available for council preview?
Yeah, I'm getting seven hard copies. Primarily, it was one to be in the library, one to be in the city clerk's office and five to be able to give to you. And I'm gonna ask you to share somewhere along the line with the planning commission. But the planning, planning commission is gonna get the final version.
So, just for clarity, somebody walks into my office and I'm scanning through this little document. Is it okay if somebody else looks at it? So, we're fine with that?
Oh, sure.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
The, the document, the document that you see will be no different than the document that's posted in the library or City Hall or on the internet. So, if somebody wants to look at your copy and you want to allow them to do so, if that's more convenient to them, allow them to do that.
I was gonna rent it. Okay, Bob? Nothing? Sue? You're on item, you're on item eleven.
Oh, I make a motion to adjourn.
She fell asleep.
I second it.
I did. I thought you asked me if I had something to say. No, not anymore.
All in favor? Aye. We're out of here. Okay, thank you, guys.
That was for Chuck.